And lastly, we also looked at the Sunburst Plan. It's a great plan right now. It provides a lot of protection for the pedestrians and all in the outflow of the events area. But with the changing of Third Street and what we had proposed, there are some modifications to this plan that we think would help the downtown environment. First of all, we propose on Washington during the event time to have one lane. Right now, Washington is closed from Seventh Street in. We propose keeping one lane of traffic to make those connections to the core. So that would be our first change. On Third Street, the outflow of the garages have three lanes going down, south, down to Lincoln, and they connect to the sevens. What's very important is to have connections to the residents at the summit as well as the future ballpark apartments and make sure that they have access to the residents. And so, we are proposing one lane of traffic up to Jefferson and to make that turn and access to those residents at those two complexes. There's going to be future encroachment in this area, which is great for the downtown, but I think with that modifications need to be made to the Sunburst Plan. So those were two very important changes that we made to, would recommend to the plan. As well as, the improvements would also preserve the pedestrian outflow area in the Jefferson Third Street environment. So we would look at closing a section. There's an orange area on Third Street just north of the Jefferson Garage to preserve that for, again, pedestrian safety, and then it would open up after the game. But those were the improvements that we look at for a better connection to the core as well as providing the circulation needed to get to the residential areas adjacent to the ballpark. And with that, we'd like to answer any questions that the committee would have.
I have quite a few cards, so how about we have the cards come forward and then we'll follow up with questions. Bentley Calvary? Anybody named Bentley here? All right. He is in favor. Ralph Marchetta?
I think Bentley had to go to a PCA meeting but had expressed interest in the Third Street. She owns a gallery south of downtown and wants increased connectivity to downtown so that Third Street going two ways would be very helpful.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, my name is Ralph Marchetta. I am General Manager of U.S. Airways Center. I've been involved in U.S. Airways Center since, before it opened, as America West Arena in June of 1992. So it's been very exciting to see the changes and really the evolution of downtown. While broadly, I support many of the initiatives that have been proposed, there are three specific areas of concern that I am worried about in terms of moving the more than 1 million guest to U.S. Airways Center every year. So, those three areas specifically are changing the traffic flow from one-way southbound to two-way north and southbound on Third Street, south of Washington Street. So that's an area that we do have concerns about. The lane reductions of Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue, in my opinion, really impact those major arterials that move people, again, in and out of downtown Phoenix. And then, lastly, reducing the lanes on Washington and Jefferson Street by adding bike lanes, again, impacting in a negative way those major arterials. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Dorn?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Tom Dorn, I'm here on behalf of the Arizona Diamondbacks. We look forward to working with everybody on the details. There are some of the issues that were stated previously that we would also have some concerns with, fully in support of efforts to improve transit and transportation downtown, so the DBAX are definitely on board with that. It's just moving the people in and out in a safe manner is the one issue we want to make sure that we address properly, so look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you. David Rodriguez?
Councilwoman Williams, members of the Subcommittee, Dave Rodrick, Downtown Phoenix Partnership. Just a couple of general comments. First, we really appreciate the work that staff has done, and especially Mark. He's reached out and come to number our board meetings and really helped us understand the issues there. In general, we are extremely supportive of this plan. There are a lot of very positive things about this. We really like the multimodal aspects of this for downtown. That's very important to us. A couple of, just three general observations. Number one was relating to the timing of some of this. We are very supportive of these things, but we feel a lot of them cannot wait for 11-plus years to happen. Conversion of some of the one-way streets, for example, we think ought to be done on a faster timeframe. Secondly, the Central Avenue, the potential of a transit mall. While we feel this is a very bold and exciting potential, there are obviously a lot of pieces that would need to be figured out and really want to work and understand. Things like access to the businesses, access to parking garages that are on Central, and so on, to really make sure that that can be done without having a detrimental impact to the businesses adjacent. The third component is relating to the Sunburst Plan, and as you've heard, there are a number of different issues for that, and there's a lot of competing interest now in downtown. It is no longer just the major event venues, and so we're hearing from residents that really want to see better access during the events and so on. We just very much want to be part of that process to really study that thoroughly, look at any potential changes, understand the implications to all the different stakeholders that that may have, and really, before any decisions are made, have a very open and public process in terms of event management. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Matthew? Did I say Trenton? Pardon me?
He has to step out.
Okay.
Madam Chair, he has to step out.
Yeah, he's from Evans Churchill.
Yes, ma'am.
And he is in favor. David Kreider?
Councilwoman Williams, members of the committee, I'm Dave Kreider. I'm with Downtown Phoenix, Inc., and I think as everyone in this room knows, downtown is becoming an increasingly powerful economic engine and revenue generator for the city. It's also becoming a much more diverse and complex community, which in general is a very good thing. We know that downtowns and other business districts are more vibrant. They generate more business activity when the streets are more walkable, when they're more bikeable, when we have on-street parking to protect pedestrians, when streets are two-way, when they're appropriately landscaped, and when we have good transit options. And I think as we all recognize, for the last generation or so, our downtown streets are heavily biased towards the automobile at the expense of pedestrians, bicyclists, and our downtown businesses. And we think that the plan that the Streets Department has worked on goes a long way to moving us in the right direction. We do, though, need to recognize that we have a lot of important event activity that's in the area of the arena and the stadium. I've been working with Ralph for almost 25 years. He looks exactly the same, and I got old. I just, I don't understand that. But we do have pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. We do need to move folks to the freeways because we do want folks from our surrounding communities to come into Phoenix and spend money here, and that's important and positive for us. I am 100% certain, though, that if we're flexible, that if we're creative, that we can continue to sustain the activities, the event activities in the arena, and accomplish the broad objectives of the plan. So we think that what's happening is very positive, and we want to stay very much engaged with the team at Streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to mention that Councilman Gates had to leave, but he is on the phone. He's still participating. Joseph Lewis?
My name's Joseph Lewis. I own a couple buildings between Seventh, on Seventh Street, between McKinley and Garfield. I've owned one of them for 25 years, which is on the National Historic Register. In fact, its claim to fame was, one time, there was parking for 70 cars out front, which of course Seventh Street was two lanes at that time, but things have changed, obviously, and now it's three lanes in each direction. And I know whenever a political body studies or even mentions the word "lane closure," it can be scary in many different ways. And I can tell you from being on the City Council in Tempe for eight years, when we changed mill from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction, you can imagine kind of the uproar we got. And that was at a time when the Cardinals were playing at ASU, and there's, you know, we all know how many sporting events happen in and around ASU. And what I can tell you from that experience is that it works. It creates more of a sense of environment, a more sense of place, more of a gateway. People don't need to travel between the stadiums and Seventh Street, for example, at 45 miles an hour. If they're going 35 miles an hour, it really isn't going to take them that much longer to get there, and all they're going to do is wait on Seventh Street anyway to enter eastbound on the I-10. So I just hope that when these final recommendations come in, is that you give the pedestrian and the bicyclist an equal opportunity to have a place on our public access roads than just the vehicle, and that you remember that the city of Phoenix, just like the city of Tempe for a long time, has sold itself as a place to live, work, and play. And if you want all of those three legs of the stool, excuse me, to come together, there are a lot of things that you need to do to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim McPherson does not want to speak, but is, or do you want to speak? Okay.
Madam Chair and members of the committee, Jim McPherson, I had to go feed the meter, so I didn't know if it was going to be, and I know you want revenue.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Appreciate your help with our budget problem.
Yes, I do all I can. I want to, again, echo the compliments to Mark and Ray and Albert and Matt, who we've worked with, and I'm representing, wearing this hat, Downtown Voices Coalition, all the work that they have done, Rick as well, to get out and about to these community groups on Saturdays, on weekends, on evenings, to really get feedback. And one of the mantras that I learned in college was "people support what they help to create," and that's what's happening now, even more so with the creation of Downtown Phoenix, Inc., with the work that Downtown Phoenix Partnership is doing. We're making that happen. And I would sort of disagree a little bit with what David said about competing interests. It's now complementary interests. We're all working on this together, and we're not seeing each other as competing. We're working together. And so, agreed about the access in and out, but also agreed with Mr. Lewis about the pedestrians, the bicyclists, all those other interests of keeping people downtown, encouraging them to enjoy downtown and what we're trying to build together. And so I think we can work together to make those things happen, and thanks again for all your work.
Thank you. Councilwoman, any comments, questions?
I always think that everything is great in concept and in theory, but it's when we practice it that we realize some of the dynamics of the changes that we're making. And so, I guess one of my questions, or one of my concerns, questions, concerns, or unaware of the unknown, of the sevens. And that's where I'm just kind of like, mm, I don't know about the sevens. But I'm hoping, as we move forward, that we do test our concept before we even actually go about implementing it on a game day or a day that we know traffic is moving through. I come from 24th Street and baseline, so at peak time, I choose not to take the freeway and I choose to take Washington and Jefferson because actually I can get through quickly through the downtown area and get to where I need to get to. And so, on game days, it's a little different because everywhere you go, you hit traffic, especially on the sevens. And so, those are my concerns of how you're going to move the traffic through during that peak time. But I also understand the concept and the strategy of not also using public transit and moving everybody through transit-oriented areas, and maybe on the outside, people park and then they come through. So this is a new adventure. It's about the future, and so I'm excited to see what's happening. I'm also a little scared, but it's fun.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, and thank you to staff. I've been at a lot of the same committee meetings as Mark in particular, but many others over the year, and I know this has been a lot of work and a lot of, there is a lot of interest, we're very passionate about our downtown, which is very good news for us. Could you talk a little bit about the Bicycle Master Plan and the process that went into developing that and the recommendation of Third Street as the top?
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, we've been working with an ad hoc committee that was appointed by the mayor's office, and that's been going on for the last, I believe, about four or five months. We've been integral in working with them with this study as well as the committee itself. They looked at an array of different corridors throughout the city, looked at the inventory that we have within the city, and looked at what is the connectivity with regards to all the different projects that we have ongoing that have been built and are being maintained right now. And so there was a very collaborative effort with that ad hoc committee that's made up about 10 or 12 folks across the, that represent across the city.
Thank you. And then we, in the Districtate Office, have been getting a lot of questions from people in Garfield who want to be able to cross more easily on Seventh Street, people who live between, I guess Van Buren and Washington, want to be able to cross more easily. So could you talk about some of the people to the east of Seventh Street and some of the concerns they've shared?
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, with regards to this study and other analysis that we're doing with regards to Garfield and how they can better connect, I can speak of what we've been doing right now, and then I'll let Mark talk about some of the interactions that we had with the Garfield community. So a couple of things that we've gotten from the Garfield community has been the better connectivity across the Seventh Street, and we are looking at some changes that will better enhance Roosevelt connection as well as other potential aspects along Seventh Street going south towards Washington. With regards to some of the implementation, we're trying to work not only with Garfield but also with Evans Churchill because they also have some vision of how to cross, not only on Roosevelt but also on other streets south of Roosevelt. So we're continuously working with those two communities to look at what is the best connection, not only in the existing corridors that we have, but also maybe future corridors that we might have further south, south of Fillmore or north of Fillmore. So with that, I can have Mark just mention what we did with this particular study with Garfield and the other communities.
In discussions with Garfield...
In discussions with the Garfield residents, they did show a concern for Seventh Street, Councilman Pastor has shown, but they also understood the need to begin to transform some of these streets, and they said tame them coming into the downtown area, and I think that's very important. They did have some reservations, but they also emphasized the safe connections on Seventh Street for pedestrians and the need for that. Over the years, we've talked about a PED bridge and all that. I think we're running away from what the problem is, and that's safe connections by creating a structure in the downtown. I really don't think that that's needed. I think there are strategies that we can implement on the sevens to create this gateway and to also increase safety in livability and bikeability and all in that corridor. There was also a very good idea that came from Mr. Marchetta, and that was to provide an area on the sevens that would, where we could take a lane away and see how it works, provide a test, as you brought up, and that was a very good point brought up from the events, both the Phoenix Suns and the Diamondbacks, that may be a way to really see what happens in certain scenarios in the events time period for future improvements.
Thank you. Councilman Gates, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to staff for all their work on this project. It's a very important project as we look at how the evolution of downtown can... First of all, have we, you know, the county employs quite a few people downtown. Have we reached out to the county and got their input?
Have you reached out to the county and had them involved?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, they were included on the email list for inclusion, for input at our open houses, and so I don't remember them being, providing any input, but they were as part of our email list.
Just as a follow-up to that, Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, we happen to have a meeting this week with the county to talk about light rail lines, and we'll bring Mark along, and he can share the study with the county leadership and make sure they have an opportunity to comment if they haven't yet, so.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then also just additionally, some of our larger private employers in the downtown area, like, you know, United Health Care of the world, some of the big law firms, you know, just making sure that we're getting them in the loop and getting their input as well.
So, Madam Chair, Councilman Gates, a lot of those folks are represented on the board of the Downtown Phoenix Partnership, and in fact, I think we had a meeting at the, I'm losing, the Arizona Summit Law School where Mark did his first presentation. They're represented on the board. So I think we'll make sure that we've reached a broader network of those folks, but through the downtown partnership, that's been a great way to connect with the business community and the property owners in the downtown, and we've had a lot of good input from employers.
So I'm definitely supportive of the efforts to make, you know, to employ the principles of complete streets in downtown, definitely going to make it even more desirable to be downtown. But I guess my biggest concern, and again, we're not being asked to vote on anything today, so I look forward to further discussions, but I just want to make sure that these changes don't occur in a way that are going to discourage people from other parts of the city from coming down here because they feel like they're going to get stuck down here and can't get out of downtown. So I think that's extremely important, particularly as it relates to the seven. Being the councilman from District Three, of course, I get nervous whenever the sevens are discussed and making any changes, and I know we're not talking about reverse lane today, but it really is important that we continue to make downtown a place where people from the rest of the city are going to want to come. So I know there's a lot of interest to balance here, and I like the suggestion of Mr. Marchetta. If we're going to do something on the sevens, do we look at some kind of a pilot? And I just wanted to get the assurance that anything we're going to do with respect to the sevens or other significant changes to the traffic flow, those will occur after the Super Bowl activities are in downtown Phoenix next year?
Madam Chair and Councilman Gates, Subcommittee members, I think most of the Phase One efforts will occur after the Super Bowl. Super Bowl will have its own unique set of temporary street closures, which will be an amazing experiment in how we are able to accommodate thousands and thousands of people coming on every mode of transportation and still have downtown operate during that time period. It will be a tremendous challenge, and our staff is very, very engaged with the partnership, with the Super Bowl Committee, et cetera, to make sure that we make it the best experience possible. But we're not, I think the zero-to-five things probably are not going to happen before that Super Bowl, but honestly, we hope that we have future events just like that after we have implemented these things. So we'll need to make sure that we have the flexibility to be able to accommodate important major special events regardless of when they occur in the future.
And Madam Chair and committee members, what's important to reemphasize is that this is really a large 10,000-foot view of these corridors. What we would, if there are selected corridors that move forward for improvements, then we would study those and analyze those in detail to make sure that the property owners and others are fully aware and have full buy-off on those improvements.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Councilman Gates?
No, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, I too worry about the sevens, right? Especially worry on game nights. People who come from the far north, who have young kids, want to get out of downtown and get them home after a game, and I am concerned that if we slow them down, it will discourage them and fewer will bring their kids downtown, and I think that would be detrimental to our long-range plans because we want them to grow up thinking downtown is a wonderful place and to live, thrive, grow, and go to school. So I caution you, I will agree to try to test it before we fully implement it and really see, looking at the different nights and the activities downtown to make sure that we don't impede the people that really want to get out of downtown fairly fast. On a bike, other options, the rail, you can mosey along, but I think we need to look at all modes. I have been very surprised because I have had many constituents recently, very vocal against bike lanes, much to my surprise. And I mean, they're very adamant, and they have asked about what's the liability when we put bike lanes next to light rail on streets that were never designed for this type of capacity? Who bears the expense or the liability if there's an accident? So those are some questions I have asked and haven't received answers for yet, but I think we need to probably reach out a little further into the community as well as to some of the businesses, maybe up Central or along the two sevens, and make sure that we are not impeding their business because we want them to be stable and grow in the future as well. But other than that, thank you for all the work, because I know you have put a tremendous amount of work into this. And to make sure that our arenas are included in future plans, I think that's very important that you have the management there as well as just some of the other representatives so that they can voice their opinions and be part of the plan and eventually, so it works very well for them. So thank you for your presentation today, and we look forward to having you come back to the Downtown Committee with results. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members.
Next, we're going to have parking meter changes.
Madam Chair, Subcommittee members, so this is another aspect of an evolving downtown, is how to deal with parking and parking management and meters. As you know, parking meters are a mechanism, really, to encourage turnover of parking spaces. If we didn't have meters, the spaces in certain areas would just simply be filled all day with people like me who work downtown and want a parking space for free. And so, over the years, we've had meters. We made changes to the meter technology, which we need to make more of, and we've also made changes to the rates and hours of enforcement. We were planning to reevaluate this anyway, but in light of the city's desire to look at various revenue options, we've actually posted, and we're about halfway through the posting period for our ability to make changes to rates and hours of enforcement so that we can actually collect more money and help with the budget situation, but also help have a more effective... but also help have a more effective meter operation in the downtown area. And through technology, we have the ability to better manage that as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Ray and the team to talk a little bit about where we've been with parking meters and what, this is really our, one of our first dialogues about it. Again, we will be back in June to probably the Downtown Subcommittee and then ultimately a formal agenda to make recommendations for final changes. Got a number of meetings. Unlike the parking study, we've only begun to have meetings in the community and we have a whole bunch of them set up over the next couple weeks to engage people, make sure we get a lot of good input. Because every meter in front of every business has a different story to tell. And we want to make sure that people engage and give us their ideas and input before we make these changes.
Thank you. Ray?
Thanks, Rick. Let me start off. Madam Chair and Committee Members, let me start off with just the program history. In the early 1970s, for about 15 years roughly, we started that program. And it's changed quite a bit. Up until the early 90s, we had a 60 cent per hour cost for using a parking meter. And so that got changed in 2009 where we basically increased it to double of, up to 150 per hour. And so that, that had a change also with the timeframe. So we went up to 8:00 PM at that time. When we started doing that, we had some concerns with the community in the downtown area. And so we ratcheted that back to an 8:00 to 5:00 timeframe. We still kept the price at 150, but that, we made that change in 2012. And then in 2013, because of a study that we had done in 2009, we had looked at different technologies, as Rick mentioned, and implemented a pay station technology and as well as single space meters out in the downtown area and in other areas as well. So just the, just looking at the parking meter inventory that we have, roughly a little bit less than half of the parking meters that we have out of 1,800 roughly are credit card enabled. And as you can see, there's about 133 spaces that we use a pay station. So that's, it's basically a pay station where it has a variety of spaces tied to that as compared to the single space credit cards. And then the other, a little bit over 50%, close to 1,000 meters, we have coin-operated meters. So the, as you can see here, this is the inventory. We have close to about 1,800 parking meters out there. The majority of them are in the downtown area. As you can see here, there's some in Phoenix College area, Capitol Mall area, and the uptown area just north of the downtown. But the majority of them are in the downtown area. And looking at some of the, just a pre-review analysis of what we did, San Francisco had done a study with regards to a lot of the different cities across the nation. And basically, in looking at the cities, there's, there was about 91% of the cities looked at, they operate on Saturdays. Keep in mind, ours does not operate on Saturdays or Sundays. Also, 67% of the cities operate a variable rate for their parking meters. And then looking at Sundays, there's 41% of those cities surveyed, they do operate on Sundays. So just kind of looking at the dynamics of what's happening not only, not only here, but also across the nation and how parking meters are being managed and operated. Looking at the parking meter hours, there was a great deal of difference between a lot of the different cities across the nation. As you can see right now, we have, we go up to 5:00 PM. As compared to the other cities, they go more than midnight. There's about six cities that go beyond midnight in some of the major metropolitan cities across the United States. So we're kind of very low on the, on the scale of what operations of parking meters we deal with right now. So as you can see, San Francisco, all of them go beyond almost to midnight, so.
And let me just add, as an example, the ones that go beyond midnight often have a lower rate per hour that you can park overnight at the meter for. Let's say you live in a particular area and you, if you pull up to a space in the late evening when businesses tend to be shut down, you can park all night at the meter, but you still pay a little bit. You don't get to park there for free. And so that's, that's how a lot of these meters work.
Now, is that an adjustable rate where it's higher in the daytime and then?
Exactly. Exactly. In fact, somebody recently was in Denver and sent me a photo of the meter with the sign and how it, you know, how the rates varied at the different times.
I'm surprised by Milwaukee.
Moving ahead with the parking meters, as I mentioned, there's, we have Parkion, the company that had, that has provided us the pay station. So we have 133 spaces that, that provide that technology. And then the very, this, the single space IPS, the company's called IPS, these have been very popular and there's about 730 spaces that are, that are being used right now. And they're, they've been very customer-friendly or I think customers just like this single space meter as compared to the Parkion meter.
Now, can you still use a credit card on them?
Yes, ma'am. These are the credit card. If you can probably see there, there's a, you can see the credit card portion. And also you can use coins for this. So it's got a lot of special features, not only for using the type of money that you want to use for the meter, but also we can, it has GIS, other software capabilities that we can track the usage and also, as we're going to just talk about, the variable rate changes on the parking meters. So this provides a, an overview of what we've been getting with regards to monthly revenues. If we go back in 2007, 2008, we were roughly getting about $90,000 per month that equated about to a little bit over $1 million for our, for that type of charge at 60 cents per hour, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00. Then when we made the change to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we not only changed the times, but also doubled the rate to 150 or a little bit more than doubled the rate. And at that time, the total annualized revenue that we were getting was a little bit to, over $2 million. And then based on the change that we did back in 2012, we've gone down to roughly about $140,000 a month that equates to an annualized cost around $1.7 million based on an 8:00 to 5:00 hourly operation that we have. This shows a graph of the on-street parking rates. And again, as you can see, there's, there's a variety of different parking rates that are situated across the whole United States. We're basically in the lower tier of that. And you can see that most of the rates go up to $5.50 and they can range from that point further, further down or up to $5.50, so. So our proposal that we're looking at is looking at three to four zones. Zone one would be more of the sports venue area. That would be in the area of Lincoln Street to Jefferson and First Avenue. The rate would change based on the demand of that time, of that day. There's a series of different sports events that we have throughout the year. And so we would work towards trying to maximize and make sure that we have a good experience for the customer using the parking meter to make sure that we're not only managing correctly the, appropriately the parking meter area in this zone, but also looking at what are the best times for calculating and adjusting the fare for that hourly timeframe. Zone two would be the central core. That would be just north of zone one. And again, we would only be going up to $4 an hour. Just to point out, overall, the posting that we have to the public is up to $6. So we're trying to be in the, in the range of that, below that, but also understanding the, the operations of it and making sure that we have good areas where we can appropriately manage the fare as well as the parking demand in those areas. And then zone three would be the government zone, we're calling it the government zone, where we would go up to $3. But again, we could fluctuate or adjust that depending on the, on the demand throughout the day with regards to that fare.
And, sorry. So, Madam Chair and Subcommittee Members, the way this works is we would have authority to vary within that range. The staff, because of the technology, has the ability to remotely manage what the rates are based upon our analysis on a year-by-year, month-by-month basis of the demand within that range, just like we do today with our parking garages. You give them a range and they manage based upon demand. The customer will see a posting of the range for those. And people, and we're not going to adjust them every, you know, every week, but they will, you know, people tend to get used to in these downtowns that have variable rates, what the rates are during certain times when they're regular customers. So, so we wouldn't say, okay, here is the rate for this day and have you approve that specifically, but rather give us the authority to manage. And it may be that it stays one rate in certain areas. It may stay one rate at all times. And in other areas, it may vary dramatically. In front of the ballpark, as an example, during the daytime, they want people to be able to come in and pick up tickets very quickly or whatever. But when there's an event, you don't want people to be parking on those, at those meters. A lot of those are bagged anyway during events. But you don't want somebody to be able to park for $5 when the going rate is 20 in the downtown area. So that, that's sort of the idea. And particularly if there's a restaurant in the downtown area where during a ballgame, somebody can park in front of there, eat at the restaurant, go to the ballpark, and that restaurant doesn't have that turnover for the next customers that are coming in just to eat. That's the kind of, that's why we're asking for that kind of flexibility.
Have all the parking meters been changed out so they can take credit cards?
Well, for the most part, we've changed most of them. We still, I showed that, that area where we have about 1,500 in the downtown area. So we still have a couple of more to change, but we're trying to focus on, on these particular areas where we do have the parking meter credit cards already established. So we're trying to use, that's why it's somewhat condensed on the areas that we're looking at. And just to note, on the future zone four, that would be north of Fillmore. We're looking at that because we don't have credit card enable or even spaces out there. So we're trying to see if we can, based on funding, look at a, at a future zone to the north of Fillmore.
I have a question.
Yes.
Zone one. I'm just going to pick up. Zone one. Sports venue, meters close at 5:00 o'clock. So at what point would I pay $5 at 4:00?
Well, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Bestor, what we're looking at is not only variable demand pricing, but also the change in time of the schedule. So we're possibly be looking at 8:00 PM or maybe 10:00 PM. So, or even beyond that. But we're showing, in this presentation, we're showing we can go up to 8:00 PM or 10:00 PM depending on either the area, the zone, or, you know, whatever we, as appropriately would be the recommendation for us to the committee to provide. So we are looking at beyond 5:00 PM.
Okay.
So some of the advantages of the variable rate pricing, as Rick mentioned, there is a, it reduces long-term parking. It provides, promotes shorter timeframes for people to change over if they're using parking spaces for long-term use. It's basically a supply-demand type of model to try to manage a better way for a right-of-way. And it does provide an ability for better use on credit cards and using a better customer service type of oriented use of the parking for, for the area. And encourages transportation modes, other transportation modes. There could be a cost and depending on how people view, because before, maybe they could park after 5:00 and they could keep the car there. This might provide a way to promote other people to go and use other transportation modes. And it also provides the city a way to lower the pricing where the, the demand would be lower. We did do a small study recently, last month, where we showed about, kind of going down the list of things. The study was on April 2nd. It was a Diamondbacks game event. The average occupancy that we had throughout about 500 spaces that we looked at was 88%. The peak time that was used, either for a variety of reasons, was 93% at 7:30 PM. And keep in mind, that's a half an hour before the end of our current operations at 8:00 PM. The average evening parker stayed about three hours without moving the vehicle. Some areas were more than, than three hours, up to almost five hours. And then as, keeping in mind that even the average lot in some of these areas, the service lots that are private, they range from $15 to $20. So even if we had a price of, let's say, $5 for beyond 5:00 o'clock, I mean, you're talking about $15. If that was the price range, we would still be competitively, to some degree, with the, the private lots that are out there. And then ours is on, the on-street parking is free right now after 8:00 PM. So some of the, some of the things that happened with this special event that we looked at. Some of the factors that we're looking at for revenue projections, again, going back to the timeframes, are we looking at up to 8:00 PM? Can we look at 10:00 PM? So those would be some of the recommendations that we would be coming back and saying, well, this is what we recommend, city staff. The possibility of including Saturdays and Sundays. There are some challenges when we have, for example, when we have a, let's say, in a big event on Sunday and we're, we're having to bag a lot of meters along certain corridors. Well, right now, we have to bag those meters on Friday because that's the enforcement time that we, that we have currently. So you, that's why you'll see bag meters for almost two days until we come back on Monday during the enforcement time to, to basically take off those, those bags. It gets more complicated when we have a Monday holiday because then we come back until Tuesday to come back and take out those bags. So there's, there's a better way to manage the right-of-way and making sure that we're consistent with all of, a lot of the events that are happening in the downtown. The other question is including holidays. Right now, we don't include holidays. Do we include holidays and the, on the, on the service timeframe? And then the effectiveness of just including this variable pricing that we can add to, to the, to the overall program that we're looking at. We do estimate between a million to 2 million in additional funding if we incorporate this. This program, depending on the timeframes that we look at with, with the 8:00 PM or 10:00 PM as well as the variable rate change. Go on.
Madam Chair and Subcommittee Members, that million to 2 million is net of the cost of adding the additional meter. Well, that, the additional meters would be paid for from a separate funding stream from capital funds. But it is net of the cost of needing to add new enforcement staff and one more staff person in streets to manage all of this because there's quite a bit more work involved. You're almost doubling, if you went to the full, you know, 10:00 PM and you did Saturdays and Sundays, you're adding a lot of hours. And if you're not enforcing during those hours, people are going to learn that and not pay. And so we have built into that 1 to 2 million the costs as, as well. So that's net revenue for the city general fund.
Thanks, Rick. And just to follow in, here are the next steps for getting us through the process of the outreach. We are in discussions with the Downtown Partnership to make sure that we're consistent with the message of what we're going to be dealing with across. So you can see here, the April, May, we're looking at downtown stakeholders, meeting with them. And then further in May, the continuation of that outreach. And then in June, looking at a ordinance review and some of the things that we have to add for enforcement. And then finalizing that in the early part of June or July and also ordering more, more of the credit cards meters so we can have that inventory in place for the implementation of that and sometime in August. So these are the next steps that we're doing in the subcommittees and the formal council meeting that we're going to do in mid-June. So with that, if you have any questions?
Well, we do have one card. David Kreider.
Councilwoman Williams, members of the Subcommittee, we're in support of the general direction the staff is going in. We feel that we could have a much more comprehensive management strategy for all of our downtown parking, on-street and parking garages and lots. And we look forward to working with the street staff on, on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Gagel?
Could you help us understand how someone would find out the price of the meter? Would it just be driving down there and reading it or? Would it just be driving down there and reading it, or?
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, we're looking at different varieties of outreach, and also continuing of that outreach. Not only, we're going to have our website, the city website, our department website. We are looking at working with the downtown partnership, making sure that folks that are visiting and are enjoying the downtown, that have access to potentially maybe an iPhone or smartphones, that we're going to be working towards our providers, to make sure that we have the enabling way to create a way for people coming to the downtown that have real-time, either smartphone or whatever, that they can have that knowledge of what those timeframes are going to be. We have to be sensitive, as Rick mentioned, about if it's, if it's a special event, that we have categorized the different special event days, where we have a certain cost per hour for that, and we would be posting that within a variety of different areas of information.
Just to add to that, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, the meters that we have, the new technology, both, both versions, both the single head and the multi-space meters, do have capacity to have that smartphone connection, and ultimately even be connected with loops in streets to show, you know, if a car pulls out of a space, it goes back to zero, and it informs people that there's an empty space in a certain place. But all of that technology costs money that we have not yet planned for. So in this first wave of rollout of these variable rates, and the rest of the smart meters, we're not going to have an app available like in August. So I don't, I don't want to make you think that that's going to start when we start this new program. But ultimately, our goal would be to have a very robust way for people to engage with and get information about, about parking rates. And we have the ability in this technology to add that, that layer to it.
What is the greatest frequency with, I mean, we've talked about real-time pricing, it sounds like that's not going to be in this phase, but it's days in advance that we might post, or we're really still studying?
Well, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, we would be looking at coming with a recommendation. Right now, we haven't defined, we've only defined a range, and we would have to come back to you all to look at the timeframes, and provide some ranges for you all to look at with the recommendation.
But just to be, just to be clear, we do have the ability technologically now to change rates variably. So we can do that part remotely right now with our meters, but we don't have the authority to do so, because the ordinance says it's $1.50.
So, go ahead. I think we need to be very, I think we'd be, we're being proactive, but I think we need to be very careful about the rating piece, and how we roll this out. It's very confusing for me, I'm sitting here just listening. I'm a black and white type of person, where I just want to know, am I going to pay, what am I going to pay on off-peak, and what am I going to pay at peak time? So I think it needs to be very clear to those that are parking at a meter. In addition to that, I don't want to get a ticket, because I thought it was off-peak, or what, I thought I paid, and then it changed to peak, and now I'm in-between. So I think as you go through this process to, and discover what is, what the capacity, what capabilities we have, to play around with it before we roll it out. And I don't know if we have a trial period also.
That's an excellent idea. Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastore, one possibility here is, as an example, we created four zones. Maybe that's confusing for people. Maybe you just need to have one zone, on-peak, off-peak. That's the kind of input that we'll be looking for as we go out there, and I think you're right. We want, we don't want to, we don't want to trick customers, we want to make it easy for them, and, and we'll pay attention to that as we go out.
I think we also have to be cognizant of the sporting area, sporting venue, because if we charge, I can't remember the, if it was $5, and we, say we stayed at 10, then my, it's advantageous for me to park in a, in a lot. So I think we have to look at all those dynamics also, to see what's our best way of going about doing this.
Councilman Gates, do you have any questions? I think he's gone. Okay. Well, thank you. We look forward to coming back, and I think we have some challenges ahead of us, but we will persevere. No, thank you. Next is called to the public, Howard May. Did you want to make a comment, please?
There was some items I mentioned at last meeting about sidewalks in the sports arena zone that need to be looked at, that some pedestrians, like myself, may have problem navigating. And speaking of that area, you might want to check your parking. I know when I was down there one time, there was a car parked in a driveway block in a sidewalk. I'm, I like what you guys are considering on the downtown and the sunburst plan and all that, and, but I agree with a couple of things mentioned earlier about making sure that the pedestrians can safely cross streets, and review some of the streets that haven't been looked at in a while, you know? Are they crossable? Are they, you know, you know, have they been looked at, or, you know, like an audit on certain streets that have been upgraded, or haven't been upgraded in a while? I know there's sections of town where I've been, that do need, you know, either new blacktop, or, you know, some, some push buttons, or the push buttons to be checked, you know? So that's just a couple of things I know. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, of future items, does anyone have any items they'd like to put on the future agenda? Bearing none, we are adjourned.